Hello.
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 Larry Campbell?
Yes.
Pat Teager.
Yeah, hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Is it just you and I or did I?
Well, I'm, I'm an Idaho host, so, so far.
This is, this is Dick Filet, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, good.
Okay, okay. The regular meeting of the St. Joseph County Council, July 13th, 2021, is now called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation which will be given by Councilman Mark Tullioian.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, thank you for the many benefits we have of living in a free country. I pray that we would use wisdom and discretion for the decisions we have to make tonight. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Tullioian. I would like to make a motion to reappoint Corey Nolan to the Emergency Management Advisory Board. Are there any other nominations at this time? Hearing none, do I hear a second?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Host. The ayes have it. Corey Nolan is reappointed to the Emergency Management Advisory Board. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the June 8th, 2021, public hearing? Motion for approval. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The minutes from the June 8th, 2021, public hearing are approved. Report from the county auditor.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Report from county commissioners.
President Morton, esteemed members of council, Andy Castellini, president of the St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners, offices on the seventh floor of the county city building. Welcome back to many of you. We're glad that we're beginning to get back to some sense of normalcy in the meetings. Just a couple of things, I know we've put some significant resource to upgrade the technology in this room, which has been especially helpful with remote meetings. And we also installed air purifiers in the county city building, in your conference room, in the Board of Commissioners conference room, to further reduce the risk of passing along all airborne diseases. So these are some of the steps that we're taking to keep us safer as we begin to get back to normal, but just want to give you that brief update, thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Report from any council special committees. Hearing none, next on the agenda, first reading, clerk, will you please read bill number 7121?
In ordinance of St. Joseph County Council, increasing the St. Joseph County Innkeeper's tax from 6% to 8% in spelling out how those funds should be allocated to help develop, produce, enhance tourism, stimulate economic growth, and create jobs in St. Joseph County. Petitioner, St. Joseph County, St., um, excuse me, petitioner is the South Bend Regional Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. Bill number 7121 is assigned to the Budget and Administration Committee.
Bill 7221, Fourth Amendment to the St. Joseph County Police Retirement Plan, petitioner, Sheriff.
Bill number 7221 is assigned to the Human Services Criminal Justice Committee.
Bill 7321, in ordinance approving the petitioner for a special use filed by the University of Notre Dame Duloc for property being located at 17526 Douglas Road and adjacent unaddressed parcel to east. Petitioner, University of Notre Dame.
Bill number 7321 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill 7421, in ordinance approving the petitioner, petitioner for a special use filed by Nativity of the Mother of God Serbian Orthodox Monastery for property being located at 32725 and 32787 Early Road. Petitioner, Nativity of the Mother of God Serbian Orthodox Monastery.
Bill number 7421 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill 7521, in ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 154, Planning and Zoning of the St. Joseph County Code is amended for address and unaddressed property totaling 5.76 acres located at Anabudding 17911 Turner's Drive, South Bend, from C Commercial District, site plan specific, to C Commercial District, not site plan specific. Petitioner, All Secure Self-Storage LLC.
Bill number 7521 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill number 7621, in ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council, amending ordinance 7913, which established the Public Safety Communications Consortium of the St. Joseph County, by modifying Section 3 of said ordinance regarding the composition of the Executive Board as established therein, the petitioner, Peter J. Augustino.
Bill number 7621 is assigned to the Human Services Criminal Justice Committee.
Bill 7721, Resolution of the St. Joseph County Council, approving a revised interlocal agreement for the operation of a consolidated public answering point, PSAP, in St. Joseph County, Indiana, replacing the interlocal agreement adopted by bill number 41-14. Petitioner, Peter J. Augustino.
Bill number 7721 is assigned to the Human Services Criminal Justice Committee. That concludes first readings for this evening. Next on the agenda, we have bill number 7021. We would like to have first reading and public hearing this evening on bill 7021. This requires a unanimous vote in favor in order to proceed. Mr. Hammond, will you please take the roll?
Sure will. Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Filet?
Aye.
Ms. Hess, is she here? No, excuse me. Mr. Tullioian?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
And Mr. Root?
Yes.
And Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. That will allow us to have first reading and vote this evening on bill 7021. With that said, clerk, will you please read bill 7021?
7021, in ordinance amending ordinance number 7620, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and setting forth the number of employees of St. Joseph County, Indiana, for the year 2021. Petitioner, PSAP.
Petitioner? Please state your name and address for the record, sir, and you have five minutes to address the council.
Peter J. Augustino, Deputy County Attorney and Attorney for PSAP tonight with offices at 131 South Taylor Street, South Bend, Indiana. The ordinance or the bill number that you have before you amends the salary ordinance to allow for increased pay for the dispatchers for the PSAP Center. It creates a retention bonus program, and I want to thank Mr. Corey Nolan, who helped develop that with us. And it allows for credit to be given to employees with comparable work history at other agencies. This is all designed to meet the need that we have at the PSAP Center to get employees in place. After several rounds of negotiation with the union during a wage opener and their collective bargaining agreement, and much research done by union members and by the PSAP management, we discovered that we were underpaying compared to local agencies. We wanted to bring pay up on par, and this ordinance does that. And we wanted to also develop a way to keep employees here, because there is a shortage across the state for 911 dispatchers. And we're one of the busier centers in the area. So that's what the ordinance does. I'd be glad to answer any questions, and I know Ray Schultz, the director, is online, and I think a union rep is online, and I think there's one here present as well, so.
Thank you, Mr. Augustino. Any questions from council, or either Mr. Augustino or Mr. Schultz?
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Krasinski?
Mr. Augustino, it's my understanding, just, just so retroactive, this will start as soon if we approve this tonight?
It has to be approved by the commissioners, and once approved, it's retroactive to June 1.
Back to June 1?
Yes.
And this is for, just for next year, because '23, it opens back up again, 2023?
This is for this year, the balance of this year, and then we're going to have to deal with this next year again.
Any other questions from council? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on bill number 7021. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill?
President Morton?
Yes, Mr. Schultz?
I, Raymond Schultz, Executive Director of PSAP, Office of 5826 Downey Avenue, express my appreciation to the council for the number of times that we were able to get together in, uh, yeah, at the PSAP Center. Of course, worked a lot of hours, uh, here far, and, um, I'm away from their families, and I appreciate all of the council's input in helping come through this. I know that, uh, met several times with Mr. President and Ms. Hess about, you know, various stuff, and they're, they're.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Thank you, Derek Dieter, 1740, Portage Avenue, South Bend, 46616, County Commissioner, District 2. I am total in favor of this. It's been a long, hard road for the council, working with all your people on that. President Castellini gave me the task of being on the executive board of PSAP, and we've been working very hard to get the salaries up there, but you guys took the lead in that and getting that done with Augustino. Thank everybody at the union over at PSAP, Ray Schultz, they do a phenomenal job, working more than eight hours a day. What they do is, again, I was on both sides of that radio for about 40 years, so I know the stress that goes from them to the policemen, to the citizens. So again, I'm totally in favor of it, it's a good step forward, and we're going to continue to work to try to help the funding of the PSAP. So thank everybody for their hard work.
Thank you.
My name's Renee Putman. I work at the 911 Center. My address is 5916 Lansdowne Boulevard here in South Bend. I'm also part of the Ask Me Local 164. Over the last several months, Local 164 has met with the county council and several organization leaders to discuss staffing issues and competitive wages for the St. Joseph County 911 Center. We would like to personally thank the members of the county council and all the leaders involved for taking time to listen, being patient with us, and offering solutions to the unprecedented events currently taking place. We believe the package presented before you will help ease the burden on the current staff, draw new mem-, draw, excuse me, draw new employees to the dispatch center, and help with overall retention. We would appreciate and continue, your continued support and unanimous vote by passing the package, and are happy to answer any questions anyone may have. Again, we thank you for your time and your support, and look forward to continuing our relationship with the county council and leadership in the future.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of bill number 7021? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of bill 7021? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing on the bill. Do I hear a motion?
Motion for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion to pass bill number 7021 was made by Councilman Krasinski. It was seconded by Councilman Kenarecki. Any further comments from any council member on 7021? Mr. Kenarecki?
I just wanted to say thank you for everything you do, and thanks for being here tonight.
Any other comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Filet?
Aye.
Mr. Tullioian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 70-21 was passed by a unanimous vote of eight to zero. Next on the agenda, we have salary amendments. Clerk, will you please read bill number 6821?
In ordinance amending ordinance 7620, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021, petitioner Prosecutor.
Councilman Krasinski? Committee report, please, sir.
I'm sorry, Councilman Krasinski, committee report, please.
This comes of counsel with a favorable recommendation. Sorry about that, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Good evening, Bob Raisenhoover with the Prosecutor's Office, with offices on the 10th floor of the county city building. We are requesting a transfer of $25,000 from the Deputy Prosecuting Attorney line to the intern part-time line. The transfer is needed to help alleviate the fact that there are currently six deputy prosecuting attorney open positions from a budgeted 23, which leaves 17 currently on staff. The open positions will be seven, effective 7/23/21, leaving 16 on staff, or 30% short from our budgeted levels. We're asking law students to help this summer, and there isn't enough in the part-time line to pay the fees. We will hire three law school students at $16 an hour and one law school graduate at $26.50 per hour. There's no increase in headcount or cost resulting from the transfer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raisenhoover. Any questions from council? Hearing none, we'll open a public hearing on bill number 6821. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion on 6821?
Motion for passage.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion to pass bill number 6821 was made by Councilman Katanzright, and it was seconded by Councilman Kenarecki. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Filet?
Aye.
Mr. Tullioian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 6821 was passed by a vote of eight to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill on the agenda, bill number 6921?
In ordinance amending ordinance 7620, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021, petitioner Auditor.
Thank you. This bill, number 6921, comes to the council with a favorable recommendation. Petitioner?
Mike Hammond, St. Joseph County Auditor, with offices on the second floor. This is money that's being spent out of the Emergency Relief Act Fund to help us get money from the Emergency Relief Act Fund to people that are in need of rental assistance or utility assistance. So to that end, we are paying N-Focus about $67,200 for some interns to, to come and help us facilitate this process. And we're also using John Marsh, who's been a longtime worker in our office, to help us with some of the budgeting and whatnot. It's been pretty successful so far. We've, you know, we've never done this, we cobbled it together. Corey Shipka's done an outstanding job, John's done a wonderful job tracking everything. But we were accorded $8.1 million to get out to people who were in need, and so far, we have spent $3.3 million. So that's just with ERA 1. So we had a lot of help from a lot of not-for-profits, these sub recipients, folks like Real Services and Catholic Charities and, and several others who've been helping us reach these individuals. City of South Bend's been instrumental also, so we're pretty happy with how things are going, and hopefully, we can, you know, by the end of the year, get all this money out to folks that are really deserving it. So ask for your approval of this.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council, from Mr. Hammond? Thank you, sir. We will now open the public hearing on bill number 6921. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing on bill 6921. Do I hear a motion?
Motion for passage.
Second. Motion to pass bill number 6921, it's made by Councilman Kenarecki, it was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Uh, Mr. Tullioian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Filet?
Aye.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
Let the record show that bill number 6921 was passed by a vote of eight to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number 6721? Bill Number 6721?
In ordinance amending ordinance 7620, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees for St. Joseph County for the year 2021. Petitioner Sheriff.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton just comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Uh, Stephen Nguyen, executive officer for the Sheriff's Department. 401 West Sample Street is our office. This is a domestic violence grant that's multi-year. In that grant, it allows us to recoup the salary of one of our officers, which she's a domestic, she's in the seasoned domestic violence investigator. She'll be working with a social worker to extend services to domestic violence victims.
Thank you. Any questions from any council member on 6721? Hearing none, I'll open a public hearing on the bill. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, our closed public hearing on 6721. May I have a motion on the bill?
Move passage.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion to pass Bill Number 6721 was made by Councilman Canaricki. It was seconded by Councilman Tullion. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing our clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Canaricki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan? He's, Mr. Nolan, he's not muted, right?
No.
Shoot. Let me come back. Uh, Mr. File?
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Tullion?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan, one more time? Hitting a dead spot or something? Our motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 6721 was passed by a vote of seven to zero. Next on the agenda, we have public hearing and public comment on fiscal matters. All financial issues were heard and discussed at our June 22, 2021 committee meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, public comment is now closed. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 6621?
In ordinance appropriating and transferring monies for the purpose herein specified for the several departments here enlisted of St. Joseph County Government.
May I have a motion on Bill Number 6621?
Move for passage.
Second.
A motion to pass Bill Number 6621 was made by Councilman Katanzright. It was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Canaricki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. File?
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Tullion?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 6621 was passed by a vote of eight to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill Number 6321?
In ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council, amending ordinance, I don't know what, 20, uh, the 2021 salary ordinance for appointed officers and employees for all departments of the county, providing a COVID-19 hazard pay stipend to qualifying county employees, Superior Court employees. Petitioner, Superior Court.
Thank you. Uh, Bill Number 6321 comes to the council without a recommendation. Petitioner?
Good evening, President Morton, members of the council. I am Elizabeth Hurley, Chief Judge of the St. Joseph Superior Court, offices located at 129 South Main Street in South Bend. We're here before the council today with a request for hazard pay for the Superior Court staff. As you know, I'm sure the Superior Court remained open during the majority of the pandemic year, really, pretty much all of it, for some courts. And we really experienced an increase in in-person matters in the court starting in January of 2021. From January through March, we had a total of 12,556 hearings held across our four county buildings, Courthouses 1, 2, and 3 here in South Bend, and the Mishawaka courthouse. Some of those hearings were remote, but many were in person, especially in Courthouses 3, 2, and 3, and some in Mishawaka, but also in Courthouse 1. We have definitely had in-person hearings there as well. We continue to limit the amounts, but had to remain vigilant with regard to time-sensitive matters, criminal hearings, things of that nature, which required the appearance of court staff and litigants to the case. We did encourage staff to work from home where, whenever possible. We staggered shifts, reduced the calendars as much as we could, but we did require staff to be in person for either a portion of the day or a portion of the week, you know, a portion of each day or a portion of days during the week, and work from home for the rest of the time. We were in very regular contact with the public, direct contact. We were provided with, and the staff was provided with adequate PPE while working with, while working in the building in person. But, uh, again, we did have that regular contact with the public. Our staff was responsible for cleaning our workspaces, both our personal workspaces and the spaces that were used by the public. And so obviously, contaminants that we're unaware of, our COVID exposure that our employees would have been unaware of, they were responsible for cleaning and making sure that the spaces were sanitized for the next group of people to come in. Starting in March, our jury trials resumed. We were holding bench trials prior to that time, but couldn't hold jury trials pursuant to Supreme Court ordinance. But starting in March, we've gone back to jury trials. We've had many, many jurors in our building, uh, starting in March. And, uh, again, that constant contact with our staff and the public as a result of that. So for those reasons, we're asking for hazard pay for our employees for the time that they've spent working with the public during and throughout the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the judge?
Mr. President?
Mr. Root?
Did the court employees receive the 2020 COVID hazard pay?
No. So this is our first request for that.
Pardon? Right. Any other questions from any council member for the judge? Mr. Krasinski?
Judge, these figures that you gave us, this is from '21 or?
Correct. That's starting in January. The hearings from January through March are the hearings listed. And then you have a breakdown of the jury trials that were done from March through May.
I'm sorry, but we probably should have asked what happened, let's say, from April to January of last year.
In terms of what was going on in the courthouses? Well, when the pandemic first, back in March of 2020, there was, in the courthouses, for the most part, a shutdown. However, the criminal judges were coming in weekly, one day a week, to do video hearings with the jails. So, and our staff were there in person even during the, you know, really at the start of the pandemic, in the thick of the pandemic. I would say some courts continued to handle things more in, through remote hearings. But as we moved through the pandemic, we really started to handle more in-person hearings. Traffic and misdemeanor court had to continue operations throughout because people were still getting arrested and needed to be arraigned. The magistrates handled those. So they were there in person with staff. And so, again, we tried to, you know, we had sort of a combination of remote hearings and in-person hearings when necessary. Tried to keep them remote at the worst times during the pandemic. As things started to ease up, we started to bring people back in more, especially in the criminal courts and the traffic and misdemeanor court. And then started jury trials again in the, I would say, in the fall, August, September, October range in the criminal court. And, you know, again, always following, though, the Supreme Court's orders when there were shutdowns with regard to jury trials. So we had periods where we were able to do them during the pandemic, periods that we weren't. In December, most recently, December of 2020, we were ordered not to do jury trials again until, and that's when they started back up in March. So we were in and out, in the building, again, trying to follow all the safety protocols that we could, but were times that we, that the staff was having contact with the public as necessary.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council for the judge? Mr. Canaricki?
Thank you. Just kind of off of Councilman Root's question. Why didn't you petition last year?
Well, I think last year, we sort of made a decision that we weren't going to because we weren't doing jury trials for a while. And, you know, we were trying our best to do remote hearings. But again, some courts were back, you know, had to be in the building regardless on a regular basis. It was just a decision that we made. But then, when things started to go back really more in full force, it became apparent that our employees were in that direct contact with public on a very regular basis then. Still, when we were under a lot of the, you know, statewide mandates, our employees were still subject to that contact with the public.
Apologies for my ignorance on this, but you mentioned Supreme Court ordinance. Is that like the state court?
Correct. The Indiana Supreme Court, right? Issued orders regularly about, you know, stopping jury trials, things like that.
So, so in some ways, whether or not you were having trials or hearings really wasn't even in your hands at that point?
Correct. Well, whether or not we were having jury trials wasn't in our hands. There were recommendations given about how we should, you know, if we could do remote hearings, do that to the best of our ability. Certain things we had to do in person. And again, like I said, our court and court staff in the felony court would come in even, you know, back in March, April, May, to hold those video hearings with the jail. I mean, we have people in custody. We have to handle those hearings. The only way to do those hearings are to be in the building, doing those hearings from our courtroom over the video with the jail. We increased our use of that tremendously during the pandemic, so we weren't transporting inmates to and from the jail to try to, you know, stave off any of those concerns. But we were still there in the building this, the whole time. There were prohibitions on jury trials where we were told we couldn't do them. But again, those sort of lifted, were enacted and then lifted, then enacted and lifted as the pandemic went on.
Well, thank you for that. And then just less relevant specifically to hazard pay, but does the court plan to keep doing some of the video stuff that you guys have started throughout? Is that?
Absolutely. We've realized what a tremendous benefit that's been, both, I think, to the court and to the jail in terms of security, in terms of cost. You know, prior to the pandemic, we had two judges doing video hearings, myself and Judge Stanford. Now, all four of the felony judges are doing those hearings. We each take a day during the week. And, you know, there are days, on my video day, where I, we, I'm communicating with the jail courtroom, and I see, you know, 25 inmates sitting over in the jail that otherwise would have been transported to the courthouse. And so, uh, from a pure safety aspect, it's, I think, a huge benefit to continue to do those. From a cost aspect, manpower, all of that, I think it's really been, we've learned a lot of good lessons during the pandemic, truthfully, about how we can do things better, you know, and do things more efficiently. But that is one now that all four judges have embraced fully and will continue to do.
Well, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council for the judge? Hearing none, we'll open a public hearing on Bill Number 6321. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, our closed public hearing on Bill Number 6321. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Krasinski?
I have a question for Mr. Hammond. Mike, is there money available?
Yeah. It's not going to be, it's not going to be COVID money, but it's, we got, it's in the... Total on that?
Yeah, that original 850,000 that you've allocated, if you look at it over a two-year period, we have about 209,000 left, even after the Superior Court, if that's approved, we'd still have to be under by about 209,000.
That's that leave money that you, so, have to leave money, remember?
I thought that would use up on the new three-year contract on the, on the LEAP program.
No, that was, no, that was, that was the other half of it.
Other half? We got a lot of halves here over the last three or four years.
Five halves.
But, John, they didn't need to know how much money we had. I should have taken your text on that, you know?
Transparency, man.
I just wanted you to know that we're, we're under what we set out to do.
This is Councilman File, and I think that part of what's going on here is what I understood to be the policy of the council in 2021, when I supported the actions that we're taking for a considerable amount of hazard pay. And to me, the thought was that that was a 2021 activity and that those who voted for it in 2021 were not being, going to be asked for it in 2022. Also, we are more than halfway through 2022. We've got every department in the, in the community that would say that they would like to have some additional amount or they have some reason to come back to us. And so I think that it isn't a case of singling out one person or another, but it's a case of following a policy that this was a 2021 event and that it would not be continued into 2022. And that's, that was the basis on which I voted for what we did in 2022. Then it was brought to our attention shortly after the first of the year that the poll workers had a very special situation and that I understood that that was the last time where we're going to be asked for a special situation. So I voted for the poll workers getting some money too out of this fund. I think, I think that based on our policies, it's, it's time to say that hazard pay is a 2021 event, that we have thousands of people out of work and not able to pay their bills, and that we should not continue to have hazard pay well into 2022 relative to 2021 events.
Any other comments from any council member on 6321? Hearing none, may I have a motion on the bill?
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion to pass Bill Number 6321 was made by Councilman Canaricki. It was seconded by Councilman Tullion. Any further comments from any council member on 6321? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
No.
Mr. File?
No.
Uh, Mr. Tullion?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Canaricki?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries 62.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 6321 was passed by a vote of 62. Next on the agenda, land use planning. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 6121?
6121, in ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council, amending Chapter 92, Consumers' Fireworks. Restrictions of the St. Joseph County Code. Petitioner Corey Nolan?
Thank you. Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, this bill comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Mr. President, this bill comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Mr. Nolan, petitioner?
Yes, this bill was brought here in order to, the first part is to align the county fireworks ordinance, the times of the day that they are allowed with the state statute, which we were out of compliance with. And then the second change is the acreage of when you're allowed a very, basically a variance to be able to have the fireworks at any time that you want, as opposed to just the days that are limited in the ordinance there. Your current ordinance has a five-acre limitation, and this would remove that. So the limitation would apply to everyone.
Thank you. Any questions from any council member? Mr. Nolan? Hearing none, I'll open a public hearing on Bill 6121. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill?
Yes. Dave Sharon, Fire Marshal with Clayfire, 1-8355 Otten Road, South Bend, 46637. We, we were in support of this. We had concerns about the five-acre exemption back a number of years ago when we were trying to realign the fireworks ordinance. But we, we still receive many calls from folks who say, I thought there were certain days and nights, because five acres, there's not many spaces with five acres that don't have people living on the fringes. So there's nothing to celebrate after those times, especially the 11 o'clock and midnight times. That just ends up being disrespect of your neighbors. So we are, we are in, in constant support of this particular ordinance.
Thank you very much.
Michael Anderson. My address is 51608 Summer Hill Drive, Granger, Indiana, 46530. And my thanks to Councilmember Nolan for advancing this bill. When I contacted him, expressing the frustration and anger arising from the abuse of this ordinance as it was in effect. I live directly to the west of the property where this has been occurring. Comes in over a pond, and they're shooting off mortars, cherry bombs. I mean, these are commercial-grade fireworks, like you use down here, Kowalski Stadium, that are being shot off pretty darn close to my backyard. They do it in the morning, they do it at night. Two weekends ago, they were doing it till 1:30, 2:00 in the morning. I am a Irish hillbilly, and my wife has actually had to physically restrain me from going out to confront these people. I went out one time, and a police officer pulled me back. There is, as the fire marshal said, a complete lack of civility, a complete lack of any courtesy to the neighbors. They're surrounded by Farmington Square, Woodland Hills, Shamrock Hills, Summer Hill, various residents, independent of any subdivision, and it's just been atrocious. My dogs go crazy. You don't know if they're going to do it on a Saturday morning at 10:00. You don't know if they're going to do it on a Sunday night at 2:00 in the morning. You don't know when it's going to happen. This is going to happen several times a week with no regard for the neighbors or neighborhood. So as I pointed out to Councilmember Nolan, it's also in violation of Indiana law because you cannot have a local ordinance that is less restrictive than the state ordinance. So for those reasons, along with the fact, maybe 100 years ago, five acres was a lot. Five acres is nothing anymore, and it's just created great distress among the people, probably thousands of us that live in the neighborhood. So I would petition you to pass the, revise the ordinance and revoke it and help give us a little peace in the neighborhood. I just saw, we're in Austin, Texas. House was burned down by some people like this that were shooting off fireworks, and it went over to the neighbor's house and lit it on fire. And I read it, and I said, I hope like hell they burn their own house down, but that's a different matter. So thank you very much.
Mike?
Mike?
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Krasinski?
Mike, put your attorney hat on now.
I had to take it off so I could say my final comment.
But, you know, I appreciate you bringing this to our attention and Mr. Nolan bringing this forward, but is this one of these things, though, that, yes, you know where it's coming from? And is it one of these things that you have to catch these people in the act doing?
Pretty much, pretty much. I called, the St. Joseph County Sheriff's Department has been wonderful. When I call, they will send down an officer if there's one available. But several times they've come out, and I, I don't know how they hear or don't hear. Maybe they just do it for a half hour, then they stop. But there's only been, I think, two or three times I've actually been able to talk to these people, at which time they raise the ordinance and say, doesn't matter, I've got this free-for-all here. Hopefully now it will get to a point where, when neighbors call, the police can get there sooner. I personally go there with a flashlight. I'll start videotaping and flash lighting, and if they do it again, I want them to find every time they do it. It's just the most inconsiderate, horrible thing I've had to endure. My wife and I thought about leaving. I said, I'll sell this house, we'll get out of St. Joe County, and I'll go to Florida, you know? Because it's that much of a distraction, that much of an interruption, and my dogs will go crazy for, you know, two, three, four hours when they do this. Of course, then you get the thing, because the dogs go crazy, I go crazy, and my wife's mad at me for getting mad at the dogs. So, you know, it's, it just never ends.
We have this same problem in Leiting, so, as you two, you know, the town too tough to die, you know?
Yeah, you got a tough ride there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're still looking for people in favor of this?
Yes.
My name is Ed Hardig. I'm a homeowner, live at 16700 Adams Road, Granger, Indiana. This would be on the south side of where the Knollwood is located, between Philbert and Crepe. And I've lived there for many, many years. And I have been blessed most weekends with noise from fireworks beginning about 10:30 to 11:30, if you're lucky, you fall asleep, 12:30, 1 o'clock, 1:30. You don't know when it's going to happen. We no longer have a dog, they ran away. When our daughter's dog comes and stays, he's under our bed, which makes everybody uncomfortable. I don't know the people personally, but I know neighbors from Woodland Hills who have gone to the home. And frankly, this particular couple don't seem to care. I don't know what's happened to civility, but that's just the way it is. When Chief Sharon called a minute ago, and he expressed guys like me, living on the fringe of people who don't really care about what happens with their neighbors and how the neighbors are reacting. You know, you, you try to get along with people and be at least a little bit considerate. So what they're doing is just plain wrong. It's just plain wrong. It's just plain wrong. So I ask you to support unanimously, if possible, this ordinance amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of Bill 6121? Is there, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of Bill 6121? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on 6121. Do I hear a motion?
Motion for approval.
For here, second.
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number 6121 was made by Councilman Krasinski, was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Hi.
Mr. Tullion?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon-Ricki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 6121 was passed by a vote of eight to zero. Bill number 6421 has been tabled at the request of the petitioner. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number 6521?
An ordinance to vacate a public way or public place located wholly within the unincorporated portion of St. Joseph County, public way or public place located at that 735 segment of Nikar Road, the center line of which is the north line of the southeast quarter of Section 20, Township 36, North, Range 3, East, beginning at the northwest corner of the southeast quarter of said section and extending 735 feet east along the north line of the southeast quarter, Section 20, Township 36, Range 3, East. Petitioner, RRG Farms LLC, 174, 17400 Nikar Road, Bremen, Indiana.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, following, spending about a little over two hours on the Indiana Toll Road parking lot this afternoon, I did not get home and get my information, but I believe this came with a favorable recommendation. Mr. Krasinski clarifies that.
Thank you, sir. Sorry about your luck on the toll road.
You don't sound very sorry.
All right. Hi, Abby Wiles, Area Plan Commission Director, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, with offices on the 7th and 11th floor of this building. This is a proposed street vacation of approximately 735 feet, immediately north of 17400 Nikar. Jennifer, I, thank you, keep going for me, please. This is a zoning map showing, it's all agricultural, and it's zoomed out a little bit on how Nikar doesn't extend west to Miami. And an even greater zoomed-out view, I think we'll go back to this during the public hearing portion. I just put it on to be helpful. But looking at the state code criteria for approval of a public way, a remonstrator can object based on any one of these four criteria that the vacation would hinder the growth and orderly development of the unit or neighborhood in which it's located. So planning had reviewed this, engineering and surveying, review all of our vacations, and there's no issue, there's no plans from the, for the county to extend Nikar West or improve it beyond what it is currently. I'm going to skip number two and come back to it in a second. Number three, the vacation would not hinder the public access, the public's access to church, school, or other public building or place. It doesn't provide access to a church, school, or public building. Four, the vacation would not hinder the use of a public way by the neighborhood in which it's located. And then, two, going back, the vacation would make access to the lands of the aggrieved person by means of public way difficult or inconvenient. When staff prepared the request for, for you for first reading at, at the committee, it was our understanding that the property was not being accessed by anyone but the petitioner. However, after sending out the certified notices that are sent prior to it coming to public hearing, an aggrieved person has come forward, and it's my understanding he will come this evening and remonstrate against the request. So that is my portion. Jennifer, would you just cut back to the, the slide prior? Okay, great. I think this would be helpful to have up during the public hearing. Thank you.
May I proceed?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Peter J. Augustino, Attorney at Law, with offices at 131 South Taylor Street, South Bend, here on behalf of the petitioner. I think one point of order, if, and correct me if I'm wrong, Abby, but the area plan did recommend this, is that correct?
Yeah. Sorry about that. So area plan had initially put forward the request without any objections. After sending out the notices, it's come to light that one of the neighboring property owners has, has stated that he is using the portion to be vacated to access his property. It's not his sole means of access. He also has an access on Osborne Road. I apologize, I'll come up. Here, this is what's being vacated, and then the other access is coming up from here. So this property owner has come forward since getting noticed. Sorry, and that was not information that we had prior to, to today.
Abby? And would that property owner that's coming forward, would they gotten a notification?
No, our procedure is to send notification of this hearing via certified mail for the public hearing, not for first reading or committee. So the first notice that they received was the hearing tonight.
For today, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. So I'd like to start first with this point about access because in the petition that we submitted to the area plan commission in connection with this, in Section 2D, we did point out that Nikar Road provides a second backway onto the property located at 17621 Osborne Road, which is the property that's just to the west of the area that we want vacated. And I want you to be aware of that because we're certainly, we're not trying to hide anything in this, in this process. That backway, which is 735 feet, which goes along and in front of a house that is occupied by Richard James, who's one of the members of the RRG, the limited liability company, which is the petitioner, that's made up of Richard James, Roy James, and Glenn James, three brothers. And this was formed, as I indicated in committee hearing, as a promise to a dying mother to preserve a house where a, I would say, somewhat disabled 60-year, seven-year-old son could live. And so that's what's happening. And we sought a petition to vacate this area of Nikar Road because right now, when you punch for directions in any kind of mapping program, it carries you across Nikar Road right in front of this house. Amazon trucks and other delivery trucks get lost and stuck. This area of the road is not maintained by the county. The maintenance on this road stops before the, the house that's located on Nikar Road. So it, it, and, and there is, as we pointed it out in our petition, and as Abby confirmed, there is plenty of access to this property to the west. That's over 1,000 feet of access on Osborne Road. And in fact, I think it's at least 1,500 feet of access on Osborne Road because that property to the west of that section Nikar has that frontage on there. There's already a drive constructed and available for use on Osborne Road. So this vacation does not prevent anyone, including Clyde James, who I think is going to be the remonstrator, he's one of the, he's the fourth brother. It's not going to prevent him from getting to his property. And that's significant. The other factors are not in dispute. So really, the, the question here that this council is going to deal with is, is a single person aggrieved? And does he even fit into that definition when he actually has access, 1,500 feet of access on Osborne Road? And I submit that he would not be aggrieved by doing that. I would further indicate to you that this is somewhat of a benefit to the county because the county does not maintain the section of Nikar Road. If you're not going to vacate it, then I think that we need to look into the responsibility of plowing it, maintaining it, and so forth. It doesn't need to be because it should be vacated. The other point I want to make is that the family, the other three brothers, I think are willing to sit down and talk with their brother about allowing him to use this property once it's vacated, if he needs to. That's a private family discussion, I think, that should not occur in these chambers. And I think whatever issues that the remonstrator may have, I have made that offer to him. My understanding, he's not willing to engage in those discussions. And that's disappointing, but that's the status of the situation here. This petition satisfies the requirements for a vacation because it, it doesn't interfere with any other public development in the area. because it doesn't interfere with any other public development in the area, doesn't deny access to any church, school, or other public facility, and really does not aggrieve anyone in allowing the vacation. And so, for those reasons, I would ask the council to approve the vacation of the section of Nikar Road, the 735 feet noted in the petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Any members of council have any questions for the petitioner?
I have a question.
Mr. Toian.
Mr. Augustino, would the correct legal solution be an easement for the fourth brother Clyde James?
No.
What type of agreement would need to be in place to allow him to have access?
I think that we could create a license for him to use.
A license?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from any council member for the petitioner? Hearing on, I'll open the public hearing on Bill 6521. Oh, I'm sorry, unless, unless.
I know those family members are here. I don't know if they're going to come up and talk.
Well, yeah, they can come up when I ask for anyone in favor or against.
Yes.
So, at this point, does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill?
Dick James, I live at 17400 Nikar Road, right at the end of the, end of it. And it has always been a problem. Cars flying by 70 mile an hour, any hour of the day and night. Trash being dumped. We've had burglary. They have parties, bonfires back there. But the most important thing is, we have a brother that is a special needs. He knows no enemies or danger, friend to anybody. And I'm just worried about somebody.
Stopping and taking advantage of him.
Yeah, taking advantage of him or.
But we've had, we've had a lot of problems with people driving back there all hours of the night. And we've had the back windows of our garage caved in, broken several times now. And there's been tools stolen and everything because they can come in on the backside of Osborne Road, where my other brother has a significant frontage on there. They come in on the backside, and where the barn in the house and the buildings are set, you can't see them come in there. And they park there, and we seen, we picked up trash and cigarette butts and everything where they park behind the barn along that gravel road, that old dirt mud road that we're trying to get vacated. We're trying to keep people out of there because my brother Dick here is in his 70s, and I have a special needs brother, and we just, it's just too much of a problem anymore. And we'd just like to get this vacated where we can put a gate up there to stop the people from coming in there at all hours of night. That's, you know.
Sir, can you please state your name and address for the record?
I'm Glenn James, and I live at 17396 Osborne Road. I bought the farm with my brother Dick and my brother Roy.
All right, thank you.
You need to say anything else?
No, I pretty well covered it.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the bill? Please state your name and address for the record, sir. You have three minutes to address the council.
I'm Clyde James. I live 64299 State Road 331, South Bend, Indiana. Did they pass the literature around to everyone here? Okay, we'll start at the top and go to the bottom, and I'll read this quick. We'll go through it. In regards to the petitioner's request to vacate the section Nikar Road, I milk cows with my parents for over 50 years at the farm that sits by the sections in question. The section has always been maintained by my father and I until his passing, when I took over. Together, we have spent over $5,000 in slag and base and limestone so we could haul our grain, livestock, hay, and straw between my wife and my, and our two farms and my parents' farm. We have never asked the county for any money to do this, ever. We have, my wife and I own 150 acres that connects to the proposed vacated road for over 30 years. We pay taxes on that road. The section is vital to our farming operation. We have trail cams all over our 150 acres to keep, see what's going on, and have not seen any problems with trespassers. Maybe twice in my lifetime, once the state police was called out, four people got drunk and stuck back there. The other time, I don't even remember. I would like to explain the pictures you have. Picture one of the proposed vacated section, my two farms, the current route I take with my equipment, be the black one. Hay and straw is in route, and then the route I would take if the section road is vacated, which would take me down State Road 331. That's the red line. The black line is what I take now. I have a driveway behind my farm. I never have to get onto 331, the state highway. I moved 4,000 to 6,000 bales of hay and straw and several thousand bushels of grain a year down Nikar Road to the lane behind, behind State Road 331 on my farm for storage. If we have to travel down State Road 331, then stop traffic, including semis, to turn into my driveway, there's a high possibility there will be accidents and possible loss of life due to the high speed that the traffic has on that highway. You can see on picture two, it is, it is just, it is just common sense to leave things the way they are, and everyone benefits. There will be no accidents or lawsuits just because someone wants to close the road that has been open since 1887. Picture two is what we usually haul down the road, two wagons at a time, a straw wagons. You can get a better look at their size. About 15 miles an hour is the maximum speed you can go down the road with them, or they start weaving. Picture three and four. These are pictures of an accident that happened on my property when a truck was pulling into my driveway and a blue car was texting someone and did not see them and swerved and hit the wagon where I saw hay, straw, and eggs. Luckily, no one was injured at that time. And they expect me to come from the south to stop north traffic to turn into my driveway when I have a back route already behind the farm, it's been there for 30 years, that goes back to that 150 acres my wife and I. Picture four shows you what happened there. Nobody was hurt, fortunately. Picture five. This picture is a survey marker. That is the end of Nikar Road. You can see where the line is where my property comes up to that. They're already farming in the center of Nikar Road. As you look at that, right there, they're farming into the center, and I have not touched any of their crops or property ever. These pictures will show you how well-maintained I keep that road. Look at that, where the slag limestone has been hauled over the last 30 years, my father and I, because we used to haul manure from that dairy farm back onto my 150 acres. Number six, well, six and seven shows you how well-maintained I've taken care of that road all these years and not ever asked the county for a cent. And we do plow that road in the wintertime to get back there because my boy has a concrete business, which we store lumber back there, and a honeybee business, which we have a honeybee shed. It isn't just used, it's used for a lot of purposes on my farm. And number eight shows a no outlet sign. That is just past Hickory Road facing west. These three pictures show signs warning trespassers not to go back there, eight, nine, and 10. Number 11 is the picture of Nikar Road that was Hawthorne Road, which was an old buggy road that used to go over to Nikar to go over to Osborne.
Can you wrap it up? I've given you a lot more than, a lot of time.
But the point of the matter is there, there's no fires, there's no garbage dump back there. I go back there at least twice a day, gentlemen, there, between the honeybees, the concrete business, and my farming. So, it would be a big injustice to me, and we'd have lawsuits, accidents if I had to go down 331, and this does not bother anybody. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Petitioner now has a chance to address some of the comments made in opposition.
I'd like to ask some questions to Mr. Glenn James in response to the points made by Clyde James. First of all, Glenn, can you explain this supposed issue of safety in using 331?
I use it all the time to run up and down with my farm equipment. I got big farm combines, tractors, semis, and he's talking about turning it into his driveway. He's got an egg produce business that people turn off at 331 into his driveway and back out onto 331 all day long. He sells eggs, hay, and straw off of that right on 331. I use 331 all the time for my farming operation.
Okay, is there any reason that you see practically that he cannot use Osborne Road to access the property?
No, I use it all the time. I gotta go down to 331, I gotta go to Osborne Road, clear to Miami, clear back to New Road to come back around.
And when you use Osborne Road, are you using it with heavy farm equipment?
Yes. I have some of the bigger farm equipment in the area, sir.
All right. And with respect to the issues that you have relayed to this council, are those things that you personally witnessed and experienced?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And do you believe that vacating Nikar Road would in any way prevent your brother Clyde from getting to his property?
No, he can go right down 331, half mile to three-quarter mile from his house, turn on Osborne Road, and go down about a half mile, and there's his road.
And does he have an access from Osborne Road existing right now?
Yes, he just poured a concrete drive into it. He put a culvert in, imported 20-some foot wide culvert for a drive where he can get onto his property off of Osborne Road.
Okay, thank you. The only thing I would like to add is that I really think that while Mr. James has done a nice job of putting a list of items together, Mr. Clyde James, that is, none of them really addressed this key issue is whether he's aggrieved. There may be sentimental, there may be other things to argue about, but at the end of the day, he's able to get to this property, 1,500 feet of access off Osborne, and it doesn't prevent it the kind of issue that he's claiming. And so, because he hasn't, as a remonstrator, hasn't shown being aggrieved, which is only one out of four factors, the other three clearly weigh in favor of granting the petition. And I don't think that Mr. James has met his burden of showing that he's aggrieved. So, the ordinance vacating Nikar should be approved. Thank you.
Mr. Przyduski?
Mr. Augustino.
Yes, Mr. James, Glenn, come on up.
Back when Mr. James was speaking earlier, he mentioned something about putting up a gate if this was approved?
Yes, to keep people coming off of Osborne Road on the lane that culvert he put in for access, they can drive right back through and come back, and they come back on the backside of that land, that property that we want vacated. They can come on the backside and where the barn sits and everything, you can't see them.
Wouldn't that, wouldn't that be dangerous?
No, why would it be dangerous? There'd be nobody driving on it, and nobody could come through.
I mean, it's not lit at night, it's dark, you know, somebody could come flying down through.
Like you got on the side of the semis.
And the other thing is, by vacating the road, you're not going to get the random traffic from Amazon and other delivery drivers coming up that road.
Mr. President.
Mr. Toian.
Mr. Glenn James, are you willing to give your brother a license to use the road if it's vacated?
We can discuss about options on this, yes.
Mr. President, I would move that we table this for a month and let the brothers work out a written agreement and come back to us.
Second, can I speak yet before you vote or not?
Okay, well, Mr. Kenarecki, do you have a comment?
I mean, maybe before, well, regardless of if we table it, just because we're all here, is Abby. What I'm looking at, like Google Maps, it looks like this road does extend far beyond the point that we're vacating, but your maps don't suggest that it does. What's, what's the disparity? I mean, can we just get the right information to the GPS mapping companies or?
I apologize, I'm having problems with my clicker. Jennifer, would you be able to go back a little bit? Keep going. Yep, thank you. So.
Because like if I, if I look at it here on Google Maps, it, it looks like that, you know, where you can see in the aerial there, there, that's a road. So, that's probably why GPS would be navigating it there, but according to us, it's not a road.
The county's right-of-way for Nikar does not extend west of what's shown on the map. So, it, it doesn't connect to Miami.
But what's this piece that goes north, south?
That is, it's my understanding that's Clyde's drive on his private farm.
And I guess that's just what's confusing is this, this calls it a road. This calls that all Nikar Road. Not you, I mean, I'm looking, this is just Google Maps. And that, that's why navigation is sending people there because as far as they know, it's a road. So, how, how would the county or GIS like reconcile that?
So, I would need to talk with GIS and the county engineer in terms of how we get into contact with Google to, to fix that. I don't know. I can't answer that now.
And that's almost a whether or not, or especially if, we do vacate this. We gotta let them know, I guess. We ought to let them know that it's not a road now. Thank you, that's all. I'm just curious.
Okay, any other questions or comments from council? Hearing on, the public hearing is officially closed, and we, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. The motion and the second are to table Bill number 6521. That motion was made by Councilman Toian, and it was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further comments from any council? Any council member on 6521? Just came in off the toll road. Perfect timing. Hearing, not hearing any further comments. Clerk, will you please take the roll on the motion to table?
Yes, I did actually have a comment that, you guys understand what the motion, what we're voting on here?
Yes.
The gentleman, and the gentleman said, just shaking, he said, no.
Go ahead.
We've tabled this.
I want to make sure I have a full understanding of what's going on here, please.
It hasn't passed yet, but the motion is to table this for a month to let the two of you try to work out how you both can use this and if it gets vacated.
That's what, that's the motion on the floor, to table it.
Then what happens, they haven't talked to me in three years, so what's going to happen after that when you don't say anything or do anything?
Well, the hope is that you guys can come to some type of viable understanding. If that, if that doesn't happen, then we will have to proceed accordingly.
We're willing to talk. Fight back here in a month from now.
Yes.
Same situation we're in right now. They have no agreements.
Exactly.
Hey, what's going on?
With that said, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
No, I did not.
Mr. File.
Hi.
Mr. Toian.
Yes.
Well, there was something. Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries 8-0.
Let the record show that Bill number 6521 was passed unanimously to table for a month. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. Next is new business. Next is privilege of the floor, limited to three minutes. The item's not on tonight's agenda. Next is a motion to adjourn. Oh, you have something, sir? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, wasn't paying attention. Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlisle. Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlisle. Unusual that there's not a whole lot with the IEC to comment on tonight, but I hear in the, in the winds, there's a talk of this solar farm coming out our way in Olive Township. Other than the improper way it was handled with our town council in New Carlisle, with them being told, in an executive session, I'm told, that they have no control over this because it's in Olive Township, it's not in New Carlisle. The, the behavior by county officials towards the residents, the elected officials in New Carlisle, in Olive Township, remains unchanged. I, I was hopeful that things were changing. Things are not changing. They're bringing in something, and it appropriately named Project Honeysuckle. I'm sure you guys all, pretty much all know honeysuckle is an invasive species. How appropriate. If it was just a solar farm, that would be wonderful. I am so for solar, as opposed to what was planned to bring in there, or what was hoped to bring in there. But if you're going to have to create another TIF district, which, Mr., I'm sorry, he spoke of earlier today, it, it's, to, to put a tax burden on the, a further tax burden after he indicated that it'd be nice if we could get out of these TIFs, but you've made some commitments that you have, you are now bound to. Why do we want to get into another TIF? If Project Honeysuckle, if the rez, whatever, whatever that means, believes in their product, become a 501(c)(3) and donate the profits to yourself, be a nonprofit. Why put a burden on the taxpayers in St. Joseph County to cover, to hedge your bet? You're, you're looking to cover your bet, they say they put up $164 million. But I just will close by saying honeysuckle, being an invasive species, leaves many times poison in the grounds, which makes it unable to use further. It shades good growing trees, good growing shrubs, and I say Project Honeysuckle will do that to this area. Please, when this issue comes up, and I know it's coming up, oppose this. These people can put up their own, they've put up their own money, let them continue to put up their money. If they believe in what they have, the product, then great. If you don't believe in that product, go sell ice cream on the corner, but take your solar farm somewhere else if you want us to cover your bet. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to take advantage of privilege of the floor to speak on anything not on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, we are adjourned.